Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Regular Meeting on Tuesday, February 25th, 2020 at 6:00 PM. I will now have an invocation from Pastor Dale Ray from Lakeview Community Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance from Jillian Usher from First Friday.
Good evening. David DeSorme.
Pastor, if you could just turn on the microphone in the center. Thank you.
Got it. Oh, Lord, you are the portion of my inheritance and my cup. You maintain my lot. The lines have fallen to me in pleasant places. Yes, I have a good inheritance. Presence heavenly Father, I give you thanks for the city that we live in. I thank you for this beautiful place, and I thank you for the leadership that you have placed over our precious city. I ask that you would bless greatly our mayor and council members, that your hand of protection would be upon our police officers and over our firefighters. We ask, Lord, that you would guide us and that we would love one another as you would have us to love one another in this beautiful place. As we ask, let your peace, let your wisdom rule and reign in this place. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, thank you. And if you would like to share a little information about your organization?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Jillian Usher. I am the Communications Director on the First Friday team. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to speak with you on behalf of First Friday. If you have not been to First Friday, I will fill you in a little bit. We are a monthly community event that is based on Main Street. We host an art walk that is featured within the streets of Scott and Querio Drive, and we are on the First Friday of every month from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. We also have live music, pop-up restaurants, activities for kids, and local crafts held by local artisans. All proceeds of First Friday go back to First Friday, and they go back to local artists of the area. Our mission is threefold. We are here to promote local artists, create a downtown culture, and support local businesses on Main Street. We have heard from a few businesses that First Friday is the busiest Friday of the month for them, so that's very exciting to hear. And I wanted to tell you about our upcoming event, which is March 6th. It's sham rockin', hence the green, so make sure you wear it so you don't get pinched. And for more information about our featured artists, featured business, please go to First Friday Havasu, and you can find that on Instagram, Facebook, and then if you have any questions, you can always email me at firstfriday@gmail.com. So, do I have any questions for the council?
Excellent, thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions?
No.
Yeah, great job transforming the culture in the downtown area. We appreciate all the work that you and your group are doing.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And we do have two more left, so we hope to see you soon.
All right, sounds good. Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is the roll call. Ms. Williams, if you'd like to call the roll.
Councilmembers Cal Sheehy.
Here.
David Lane.
Here.
Jenny Koch.
Here.
Gordon Groot.
Here.
Michelle Lynn.
Here.
Donna McCoy.
Here.
Jim Dolan.
Here.
The next item on the agenda is the call to the public. This is the opportunity where citizens have to address the city council on anything within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. You don't have to sign up to speak. You just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record. There is a light indicator box at the podium. The green light means you have three minutes. The red, yellow light means you have one minute remaining, and the red light means that your three minutes is up. With that being said, would anyone like to address the city council during the call to the public? Seeing none, we'll close the call to the public. Item six is our consent agenda. Would any of the councilmembers like to remove any of the items on the consent agenda for additional discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion?
Yes.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
We have a motion from Councilmember Koch and a second from Councilmember McCoy. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item seven is correspondence, communications, petitions, announcements, and the city manager report. Item 7.1 is announced vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams.
Mayor and city council, there are several vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The following is a listing of those vacancies. Board of Adjustment, three regular members, three alternate members. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, one regular member. And the Planning and Zoning Commission, one alternate member. Anyone interested can pick up a packet at City Hall, and they are also available on the city's website.
Thank you. Item 7.2 is the city manager's report. Mr. Knutson.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Members of council and staff, we attended the Lake Havasu Area Chamber of Commerce State of the State Event with Governor Doug Ducey just last week. Mayor Sheehy, you gave a State of the City address, and Ella Woolford, the Lake Havasu High School Student Body President and Hayek member welcomed and introduced Governor Ducey. We're very grateful for to have Governor Ducey in Lake Havasu to deliver the State of the State for the second year in a row. Over the past two weeks, Mayor and council, we've been very busy celebrating local happenings. Mayor Cal Sheehy proclaimed February 12th Freedom Shrine Dedication Day with the Lennon Bridge Rotary Club. The Freedom Shrine is an impressive display of a collection of historic document replicas located at the Lake Havasu School Library. On Friday, February 21st, Mayor Sheehy, you proclaimed the day as Mark Eugene Aitken Day in honor of Mr. Aitken earning his Eagle Scout rank. He earned this rank with his project of coordinating the transportation and installation of donated playground equipment, organizing volunteers and donations, and repainting and renovating the entire kindergarten playground at the Jamaica Elementary School. On Saturday, February 22nd, Vice Mayor Lane, you and the Havasu Kiwanis Club, Lake Havasu High School, and Taliesin's Preparatory Academy Key Clubs hosted a highway cleanup. Despite the stormy weather, a large number of bags of trash were collected to help Lake Havasu City keep beautiful. Also on that same day, Vice Mayor Lane, you joined Councilmember Gordon Groot and Donna McCoy for ribbon cutting at Winter Blast, celebrating the Western Pyrotechnic Association's 20 years as chamber members. On Sunday, February 23rd, Mayor Sheehy proclaimed the day as Line Dance Day on Lennon Bridge. And somewhere in between all this, Mayor Sheehy, you accepted a very generous donation on behalf of the teen break from the Western Welcome Club of Arizona. So, thank you very much for that donation. Mayor and council, we put together some stats on some certificates of occupancy for residential construction in Havasu, so wanted to show you what the activity looks like in Havasu since July of last year. These are the number of homes, single-family homes or duplexes that are constructed in Lake Havasu, and you can see the month-by-month totals. So, every quarter I'll come back and share these numbers with you, so you have an idea of what construction looks like in Havasu, and this is a very good indicator of economic activity in the community. The next coffee with the mayor and city manager will be Friday, March 6th. It'll be from 8:30 AM to 10:00 AM, and it'll be held in the main dining room of The Views at Lake Havasu. That's at 2110 Swanson Avenue. As always, residents are encouraged to attend, express their ideas and concerns, and it's a come-and-go setting, so no RSVP needed. If you have any questions or need some more information, contact the city at 453-4152. Mayor and council, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Knutson. Moving on to item eight is our public hearings. We'll start with item 8.1, Adopt Resolution Number 20-3377, ordering and calling a primary election to be held on Tuesday, August 4th, 2020, and if necessary, a general election to be held on Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020, to nominate candidates for councilmember positions, and providing for and giving notice of such elections, and the deadline for voter registration, and the place and last date for candidates to file nomination papers. Ms. Williams.
Mayor and city council, this resolution designates Tuesday, August 4th, 2020, as the date for holding the primary election in Lake Havasu City for the purpose of nominating candidates for three councilmember positions. Lake Havasu City will also hold a general election on Tuesday, November 3rd. Any candidates receiving a majority of all votes cast at the primary election will be declared elected without running in the general election. In order to be qualified for voting, electors must be registered by July 6, 2020, for the primary election, and October 5th, 2020, for the general election. Candidates seeking office for councilmember may obtain the nomination petitions and other materials in the city clerk's office. They must file their papers and other required forms by the deadline of April 6th, 2020, at 5:00 PM, in order for their names to appear on the primary election ballot. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Ms. Williams? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion?
Yes.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 20-3377, ordering the calling a primary election to be held on Tuesday, August 4th, 2020, and if necessary, a general election to be held on Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020, to nominate candidates for councilmember positions, and providing for and giving notice of such elections and deadline for voter registration, and place and last date for candidates to file nomination papers.
Second?
Thank you. We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Councilmember Lynn. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, the next item is item 8.2. Actually, the next two items have been withdrawn by the applicant, but we'll still have a quick presentation and a public hearing. So, we'll start with item 8.2. Again, this has been withdrawn by the applicant. It was to adopt ordinance number 20-1228, rezoning tract 2208, Block 13, parcel L, and tract 2217, Block 9, lots 3 and 4, from R1 Residential Single Family District to R3 Limited Multi-Family District to R3 PD Limited Multi-Family Plan Development District, not to exceed 6.99 units per acre. Mr. Morris.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, thank you. As you mentioned, this item has been withdrawn by the applicant. As you recall, at the January 14th meeting, the city council, this is on the schedule, the applicant asked that it be postponed till this meeting. Subsequent to that, he met with staff and chose to withdraw the application at his request. They planned to explore a redesign of the project, reducing the number of residential units. So, with that, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, and through that process, that would start the process over again from the very beginning?
If he was going to propose something that required a zoning change, like this does, then it would go through the same process. It's basically a three-step process. He would host a neighborhood meeting for the growing smarter, to meet those growing smarter legislation, inviting property owners within 300 feet to that meeting. He'd take notes at that meeting and submit that citizens' report as part of his application for the rezone, and then submit that to staff with his application, and then staff would schedule that, once it's submitted, for a Planning and Zoning Commission public hearing, and the Planning and Zoning Commission then would hear the item, make a recommendation that would go on to the city council, and the city council would ultimately decide. So, if it's anything that required a zoning change, it would have to go through that process.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Mr. Morris? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. So, we would still need the suggested motion to disapprove this item if any of the councilmembers would like to make a move.
Well, no, I'm sorry. There's no action that's required of the council.
No action at all.
The item has been completely withdrawn. The presentation was just for informational purposes, so no action is required.
Okay, thank you. That was the one question I didn't ask, what do you do next? So, thank you. All right, so then moving on to item 8.3 is also withdrawn by the applicant, but it was to adopt ordinance number 20-1227, rezoning tract 100, Block 9, Lot 54, at 2105 Moyo Drive, from MUNPD Mixed Use Neighborhood Plan Development District to RUMS Residential Uptown McCulloch Main Street District. Mr. Morris.
Mr., excuse me. Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, thank you again. Yes, this item was also originally scheduled for January 14th hearing before the plan, excuse me, before the council. The applicant requested this one be postponed till today's meeting. He's, again, withdrawn this from consideration. Apparently, the property owner had a change of what they proposed to do with that property. They may want to try to develop it as it was originally zoned, so at this point, he's withdrawn this application, asked that it be withdrawn. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions? All right. Moving on then to item 8.4 is adopt ordinance number 20... Dash... Is that a public hearing? It is a public hearing, so would anyone like... We're going backwards again. Back to 8.3. It is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any further comments? Yeah, I'm a guy of habit. I can't, you can't come and take me out of the habit. All right, 8.4. Adopt ordinance number 20-1230, approving a major amendment to Plan Development Number 97005, the center, by removing and rezoning APNS 120-56-001, 120-56-002, and 120-56-003, 30, 40, and 80 Retail Center Boulevard Parcels A, B, and C, from C2 PD General Commercial Plan Development District to C2 General Commercial District. Mr. Morris.
Mayor and councilmembers, thank you. This property, these properties are in the area of the shops at Lake Havasu on the north end of town. Here's an area map. You'll see the properties, the subject properties here are outlined in yellow, and this dashed red line is the city limits. The properties bounded, the properties are bounded by Home Depot here to the east, and then Retail Center Boulevard sweeps around to the, to the east of the properties and north, and then the mall properties to the north. So, the county abuts it to the west and to the south. There's a manufacturing, a mobile home park here, or RV park to the north, what's at the southwest corner of the property, and there's also a sewer treatment, sewer lift station, and an electrical substation near the properties. These are the three properties as the subject of the request, parcel A, parcel B, and parcel C. There are a number of various easements that run around the edge of the property and through the property. There's also a wash that comes through here. The developer or the property owner will have to deal with those as part of the development of the property. There are no improvements on the, on these properties at this point. Little bit of history in the zoning. The subject properties are down here again, outlined in yellow. There was a plan development that was amended in 1997 for the whole area of the mall, including the area where the Walmart and the shops at Lake Havasu and the rest of this property. It was rezoned to C2 Plan Development. There was a, what was called a general development plan that specified where the buildings were, and those are where the existing mall structures are. The rest of the properties did not have a specific development plan as far as what buildings were going where. So, anything that would go in there, actually, let's start over here. You've approved a number of rezones for some properties that are to the east here, on the north side of Retail Center Boulevard, and then across Retail Center Boulevard, just south of the mall property, and then portions of the mall property itself were removed from that PD so they can do whatever's allowed in C2. The applicant in this case is asking for that same process, to remove themselves from the plan development, to develop whatever's allowed in the C2 zoning district. The Planning Commission heard this item at their January 15th meeting and recommended approval by a vote of six to nothing, six to zero, I guess. Sounds like a baseball score, doesn't it? So, with that, I conclude my presentation. Thank you.
Do any members of the council have any questions for Mr. Morris? Luke, what would happen if they, why do they have to come out of the PD to do this? Because in the PD, it doesn't allow?
Well, the PD, a little bit of history, in the distant past, previous to recent code changes, any, most of the time, the PDs of plan development would be reviewed for design review by the Planning Commission and/or the city council. Since the code has changed to the current version, those aren't required to be reviewed by the Planning Commission or the city council. So, an advantage of getting out of the PD is they just develop it per the development code, and it's reviewed by staff for design review. It still goes through the design review process, but in this case, there's no specific plan laid out for it. There was no design review that was approved when it was master-planned, so an advantage for them, if they remove themselves from the C2 PD, is that it wouldn't necessarily have to go to Planning, Commission, or City Council. It's a little awkward there. It's cleaner to do it this way, so it just gets removed, and then just a design review by staff.
So, the C2 PD would allow for storage units as well? It just, it would, it would prevent those two additional steps of having to go through P and Z and council?
It may have to, would have to be reviewed, presumed by city council or and/or the Planning Commission for plan development. If we, correct me if I'm wrong, if we stick to the strict interpretation of the way the plan development was approved back in the day, back at the original plan development, this would make it just cleaner and easy. If it's out of the PD, it just follows the current rules, which is design review by staff.
All right, do any members of the council have any additional questions before we open the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And just to clarify, because I think people at home may be a little confused, so the PD is following rules that were adopted when that became C2 PD for the mall area. So, basically, this just allows us to get rid of the decision then for the mall when it was originally envisioned, and make it just general C2, like the surrounding properties are, and then they abide by the zoning code of today, basically, just to make sure.
Yeah, that's a good way to phrase it.
Okay.
All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Do you get to state your name for the record?
It's on?
It's on, yes.
Tom Sanders, Our Pembroke Home. I completely understand that storage units can be built out there in the C2 PD, and my business has recently taken on part of the shops at Lake Havasu and invested quite heavily in build-out and trying to keep that mall from being as vacant as it has been over the past decade or more. As a, you know, as an owner out there, I really just don't see the upside of encasing the mall property in storage units on all sides. While they may or may not be able to do it, I don't know if the owner's here. I beg of you, you know, I don't know, find another spot. There's probably cheaper property or something, but it's not retail-friendly. I, I feel like there's a lot of, a lot of people that will end up out there once or twice a year to get their boat out of a storage unit, not make it any farther than that, and completely shut off what could be a really good use of property out there. Not saying I wouldn't, you know, though however this goes if I was in your seat, but I, I personally just don't like the use of it, unfortunately. At least my voice is heard.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Luke, I just want to confirm something. I've got a few phone calls from a few different property owners out there because they read an article in the paper about a developer wanting to build storage units there. This rezoning is not approving any storage units to be built there. If the developer wanted to come in and build storage units there, that would still have to go through planning and zoning and still come to the city council for approval or denial on that.
Yes, thank you. Excuse me, thank you, Mr. Lane. This prop, excuse me, this request is to remove thems, themselves from the PD, so that means it would go straight up to straight-up C2 zoning. So, anything that's allowed in the C2 zoning district would be allowed. They have to go through design review for that through the, through city staff. It would not require a design review for the Planning and Zoning Commission or the city council, or review by the Planning and Zoning Commission or city council. It would come through staff for design review, same as the other properties that were rezoned to C2 out at the mall. They were removed from that plan development, and the stipulations and parts of that plan development, and they're straight-up C2 now. So, it would be the same as any other C2 properties that were recently removed from that plan development out there at the shopping centers.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question. My only concern was, we're doing a lot of redevelopment or rezoning to try to bring more commercial space out there, and as Mr. Sanders said, surrounding it with storage units. Personally, I didn't think that was a good idea, but Stuart apparently has something to say.
Yeah, I think what we need to do is just, oh, Stuart Schmeling, Development Services Director, zoning administrator. I think we need to move the conversation away from storage units. It's when you're rezoning the property to C2, really, all you're doing at the end of the day is allowing site plan approval or design review to be done by staff, which it should be anyway. In the event that you're, you have a concern over that particular piece of property or anything else that's zoned C2 PD out there, where you feel, you being the Planning Commission and the city council, feel that you need to go through that design review process and improve parking spaces or landscaping, then you can leave it as such, but you're going to allow all the uses within the C2 district to be permitted on that property once it's rezoned.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd be a little more concerned, first of all, it's Girl Scout cookie season, and I haven't gotten a box of Girl Scout cookies from you, so just want, just want to point that out. I'd be a little more concerned if it wasn't already parts of C2, except the mall area itself, and even across the street, C2, they could put, you know, if we wanted to discuss storage, they could put them there. Like I said, my thing is, we're letting the developer decide what belongs there based on what the value of the property they think it's worth, and I'd have a hard time limiting them to do that. That's just my opinion. It's, it's, there already is C2 in the area. If it was all C2 PD and we were limited just for mall space, but we've kind of moved past that in my opinion, so, yeah, that's just my opinion.
Well, and more importantly, you're taking 90 to 120 days off of the development of those lots potentially, for nothing more than being able to review building color, landscaping, parking spaces, those kind of things, building height, that we would look for anyway.
Any other questions from, from council? Yes, some of the bigger conversation we're going to have to have soon is the, the general plan identifies some of these areas as employment use, and we have some, some land challenges as we're having infill in our community, and all those storage units are obviously a great business for folks because there, there's a high demand. We're going to have to talk about how land use looks for, for that, to make sure we're doing that, but this particular action in front of us, really, the question is, do we have them go through the plan review through, through planning and zoning and the city council, or do we let city staff do that? No matter what, they can build anything in the C2 in there regardless of our action tonight. It's just the process and how they do it, and as Stuart said, it basically would save 120 days on the development. We don't really have a whole lot of other say in this particular one, but we will have to start having that, that conversation, and I don't agree, don't disagree with Mr. Sanders that the mall, ideally, you would not encase it with, with storage units, excuse me, storage units, but we'll just have to have that bigger conversation as, as we continue to infill in the, in the community. Is there any other discussion from the council or any comments? I'll entertain a motion. Oh, no, I'm sorry, yeah, public hearing's been done, all that's, that's good. All right, I'll entertain a motion. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion?
Yes.
I move to adopt ordinance number 20-1230, amending Plan Development Number 97-005, by removing from the Plan Development and rezoning APNS 120-56-001, comma, 120-56-002, comma, and 120-56-003, from C-2 PD to C2.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Councilmember Groot. Is there any further... Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to one.
Thank you. Item nine is current events. Uh, do any of our council members have any council committee reports? Councilmember Lynn?
Mr. Mayor, um, last night, we had a Parks and Rec, um, meeting, and I just wanted to share, um, some concerns that the Parks and Rec Board, in regards to the conversations we had at our recent retreat, um, on the quarterly meetings, um, the board is not in favor of that. They would like to continue with, at the monthly meetings, if anything, it was a five-to-two vote. The quarterly was not what they were in, uh, favor of. If it was more meetings that were revolved around certain dates, they were okay with that, but they were pretty vocal that they're not okay with that. And then I'd like to offer our condolences to the family of longtime resident and active Parks and Rec Board member Chuck Vaughn. He recently passed away, and Chuck had always something nice to say and, and, um, add to our meetings, and he'll be greatly missed. Thank you.
Thank you. If I may? Yeah, Vice Mayor Lynn?
Thank you, and it's not really a report, it's more of an invitation. Um, I was, um, contacted by the Lake Havasu Little League, uh, to throw out the first pitch on March the sixth at six P M., um, at Sarah Park Little League fields, and so I wanted to extend the invitation to all of the council and the mayor, uh, if you'd like to join me, uh, for the opening ceremonies of Little League, uh, and to throw out the first pitch.
Yeah, I'm not going if that's the case.
You don't have to throw the ball. I'll, I'll handle that part.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Dolan?
Uh, we also had an airport advisory meeting this week. Um, we didn't discuss those issues. What we did discuss was the airport master plan, um, and we also discussed having a, um, a planning session with the airport advisory board, so we can go over some of the, some of the issues we may be having as far as getting things on the agenda and open meeting law and all that stuff, so we're all on the same page, and so we can, yeah, so then at that point, we'll be discussing what the staff was, what the council was discussing at the retreat and, um, get some feedback on that, so. That should be happening either next meeting, next month, or the following meeting, they're still figuring that out with staff.
Thank you. Councilmember McCoy?
Mr. Mayor, um, thank you for saving the best one for last here, which is the, um, Western Arizona Council of Government, or W A C O G, as we so friendly, uh, like to refer to it, the, uh, Regional Council on Aging. Um, I think it's really important for people to understand that maybe caregivers for, uh, friends, neighbors, elderly, uh, family members, there are a lot of services that you can apply for if you know somebody. The starting point, that's always the hardest thing for people to know, so I wanted to make sure everyone knows this, is, uh, one-eight-hundred-seven-eight-two-one-eight-eight-six. They will evaluate what is going on with the individual, um, and take it from there, and there are many, many resources that they can help with, uh, mills on wheels, um, making sure there's people that come out and clean houses for the elderly, and also, um, just even get in and restore, um, you know, air conditioning, things like that that need to be done. So, um, our W A C O G dollars, that's all of our dollars, um, at service, so it's there to be used, so just want people to take advantage of it.
Councilmember McCoy, could you give that phone number, uh, one last time?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Uh, one-eight-hundred-seven-eight-two-one-eight-eight-six, and that's, uh, W A C O G, and that's the basic person who will get the information and get you to the right department, because it's, sometimes it's very frustrating finding who it is you should be talking to.
Thank you. All right, any further council committee reports? Seeing none, uh, we'll move on to item ten on the agenda, which is our final call to the public. Again, this is an opportunity for citizens to address the city council on any matter within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. Um, if you would like to do so, you just make your way to the podium, uh, state your name for the record, uh, and then, uh, give us your remarks. With that being said, would anyone like to address the city council during the call to the public?
Uh, my name's Mark Zief. I'm, uh, I'm a volunteer for two, uh, advisory boards here, Airport Advisory Board and Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and I just want to make it clear that, um, in our discussions about limiting the meetings to quarterly or bimonthly, I was strongly in objection to that, uh, because in my view, those meetings are generally for the public to come and voice their concerns, and even though we might not have something on the agenda for those meetings, it doesn't give the public an opportunity to come up monthly, and seeing how we have snowbirds, California visitors, different people visiting the city throughout the season, a monthly meeting allows the public to come once a month and bring new issues to the board. Nobody can predict the future. Change is beautiful, change is great in some eyes, but sometimes things need to be changed, and if you need to change an agenda, you can always cancel one. If there's nothing on the agenda, we can cancel it, but you can't really cancel a, an agenda that is put out every three months. For example, if we did quarterly or bimonthly, and we did have an agenda or, or a meeting canceled due to a vacation, somebody not being present, like one of our managers, we'd have to wait six months, or then we'd have to wait further for the public to come and bring their issues. And I've been on the boards for a couple of years now, and the Airport Advisory Board is really busy with concerns of the people out at the airport. We always have people come up and speak their minds. Parks and Rec, uh, Mike Keane is excellent, he brings a lot of, uh, activities and operations to the board for us to look and review, and I just think it's imperative that we just keep going with the monthly meetings. Uh, my motto is, if it isn't broke, don't fix it, and the other thing is, it seems like, if you're going to do that, you'd have to rewrite the code, and that just seems like a whole lot of work that we don't want to get involved in. So if, if it's working fine and there's no objections, I'd like to just keep it as a monthly meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so just, the, the code will be rewritten, that is correct. That was the direction that, uh, council gave, uh, staff during, um, um, our planning session, and it'll come back, uh, in front of us on a public hearing, so we'll have further discussion on that item. Uh, would anyone else, yes, ma'am? Can you just state your name for the record?
Hello, I'm Dr. Genevieve Newman on, uh, Indian Hills Drive, and I was here before speaking because of the concerns we had with that development that has been withdrawn. And I have a neighbor from Wisconsin who had planned to come out to speak, but he slipped on the ice and broke his back, and he swears he's moving out here full-time. So he sent me a long letter, would I please do something about? I will spare you that, because I've given the, uh, copies of the letter, but the back page had a very interesting observation about tiny homes. He is wondering, is that just a fad? Most of us have lived, I've lived thirty years here in Havasu, our homes have gone up in value, not necessarily down. Now, what he's wondering, this is just a spot development, but what do we think is going to happen to our houses in Havasu? And those little tiny homes were only five hundred square feet, and I, by talking with Luke and all, he says if you zoned R one, five hundred, that's the max, that's the minimum. And I was, that's terribly tiny. They can just become shacks pretty soon, even though they may have started out luxury, but I was just wondering how you are viewing Havasu? We have the lovely subdivisions up in the foothills and all of that, and then we've got some spot zoning all over town that's getting crammed with small dwelling places. And I'm just wondering, who is looking out for the overall picture of housing in town? Obviously, you need housing that is low rental, but how do we handle that? Have you taken that up with the federal government or anything like that? That's just my observation from looking at that. My objection to the developer's concept, and I talked with him outside too, was at two-hundred thousand dollars, if you're only owning the footprint under your little house, that doesn't give you very much. You don't have room to build a family, it's a one-bedroom house, and it's a living room, dining room, kitchen, all open. Those are very minimal things. Can't we do better? I'm just wondering, is any, I'd be happy to fall into some time if you've got a task force looking at low-income housing, but I think to call something luxury that small, is that what you want? So that was my observation from today, and I'm glad that he's withdrawn his, um, request for now, but he says he's coming back, so you'll probably be seeing us back unless he makes considerable changes. But I thought you dealt with him very, very fairly by giving him plenty of time to do the pictures that he wanted to show us and everything, but nothing has happened. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
That was my beeper, sorry.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the, uh, city council during the call to the public? All right, seeing none, we'll close the call to the public. Item eleven is our future meetings. Our next meeting will be on Tuesday, March tenth, two thousand and twenty, at six P M. It's a regular meeting, and then we'll have a meeting on Tuesday, March twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty, at six P M., which will also be a regular meeting. Do any of the council members have any future discussion items? No? All right, uh, motion to adjourn?
So move second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Be kind.